Okay Chair.
Great, thank you. Good evening, and calling this public hearing to order at 6:00 PM in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetland Protections Act, NGLC, 131 Section 40 in the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinance is Chapter 7-1.4, the Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public meeting this evening on February 15th, 2023 to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and the protection of wildlife habitat. This evening, the commission will be holding this initial public hearing or a series of public hearings followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application views in meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle @BostonEnviron using the hashtag #ComComHearing. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Will staff that's present please identify themselves?
Allison Berzius, Environment Department.
Pat Ashel, Environment Cabinet.
Christopher Edwards, Environment Department.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll call the role of commissioners here this evening. Commissioner Conan.
Conan Truvangaram, I'm here, Chair Parker.
Commissioner Richmond.
Alice Richmond.
Commissioner Herbst.
Anne Herbst.
Thank you. And if there's no objection, we're going to take one project out of order tonight due to a conflict. So that being said, first item on the agenda is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 2022-2023-007 from Hughes Environmental Consulting on behalf of the City of Boston Parks and Rec Department for Phase Two of the Rosendale Wetlands Urban Wild located at 108 Walter Street, Rosendale, and we have as the resource area 100-foot buffer to isolated vegetated wetland. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening, Tom Hughes with Hughes Environmental Consulting.
And Tom, oh no, go ahead. Do you have anyone else?
No, I was just gonna say Paul Sutton could not make it. He has another engagement tonight from the Urban Wild program, but I think with the commission's pleasure, I think I'm gonna breeze through some of this stuff because this is very similar to your prior project.
Just hold on a second. I'm gonna suggest that, you know, we have the materials. We've seen Phase One of this, and several of the commissioners, if not all of the commissioners, have been out to the Rosendale Wetlands either for the 108 Walter Street ceremony or for various cleanups and tours. So I'm sure that everyone's read the materials pretty closely, very familiar with them. So I think instead of a presentation, I'll just go around and see if there are any questions from the commissioners, if that makes sense. So Allison, do you have anything on this?
No comments.
Okay, Commissioner Conan, do you have anything?
No questions, Chair Parker.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richmond.
I'm really excited about this. I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Also excited to see it move forward. Thanks.
Great, thank you. I note that we have Ms. McCabe has filed the letter of support from Lana, and I don't know if she wants to verbally provide any comments if she's on the meeting this evening, but I would invite her to do so if she is on. And I don't see her, so.
I don't see her either, Chair.
Okay, so I think that, Tom, what we're gonna do is vote to close the hearing, and I think that maybe Allison has talked to you, the order of conditions will be basically the same. They'll mirror the order of conditions for Phase One. Does that make sense?
It does, and that's actually preferable because we'd like to not have to manage parts of the urban wild differently. I do want to just make one important point that this NOI is only filed under the ordinance because, as you recall, we confirmed the resource area to be ILSF, and since we're not in the ILSF, it's not jurisdictional under the State Wetland Protection Act.
We understand, thank you. Okay, so.
Before you have a vote, we do have one public comment in the chat from a Deb Beatty Mel who's excited, is a resident of Walter Street and is excited to see the project move forward.
Fantastic, thank you. Thanks for your comment. Okay, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
You have a second? Thank you. Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries for nothing. Okay, thank you, Tom. Good luck out there.
Yeah, thank you so much. Take care.
Next item on the agenda is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0061913 in Boston File Number 2022-058 from Nitch Engineering on behalf of Boston Scores for the proposed structure of a new field house, three outer fish turf fields, new access driveways, parking lot, and stormwater management system located at 1 Westbrook Street, East Boston. The resource area is land subject to coastal storm flowage, and this hearing is continued from the January 18th, 2023 hearing. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hey, good evening. Joshua Soares, the Project Civil Engineer.
Great. Okay, so we sent you away with a little bit of homework. Did you want to recap the what we asked you for in your responses for us?
Yeah, sure, if you kind of just want to get right into it. So as you're aware, the project consists of redevelopment to include some new parking areas, turf fields, and a new bathhouse facility within the land subject to coastal storm flowage. And following the presentation at the initial meeting, we mostly heard some feedback regarding the existing trees to be removed in comparison to the proposed landscape. In addition to some requests for additional information regarding the specifications for the synthetic turf, and also some operations and maintenance improvements. So we went ahead and we compiled some supplemental info which we forwarded to the commission. So happy to take any questions that you might have, or we're happy to skip to, if you went to slide, I believe, number 12, we can kind of get right into some of the landscape discussion based on what we saw in the field for that tree inventory. So I'll hand it off to the project landscape architect, Josh Malonig, who's also on the line.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Josh Malonig, Landscape Architect with Warner Larson Landscape Architects. So this slide right here is one of the questions about the proposed tree canopy growth. So we did a quick rendering showing potential growth of the installed trees at five-year, and then the next slide is kind of a mature mature size at roughly 25 years. So as you can see, just orientation of this, the MBTA blue line is toward the south. North is kind of page or image, image up, west is left. So this kind of shows an afternoon, maybe early evening, early morning kind of shadow study as shadows are creeping across, making kind of everything goes to the north. So we have a variety of trees on here. There are all deciduous trees on here, so they provide good tree canopy. And a wider species kind of list that's out there. So the trees are all planted on the south side of kind of the fields and the user areas to provide use of shade for spectators that can sit beneath the canopy of the tree to help kind of cool potentially some of the players, but also most spectators that are out looking around. Any questions on?
Yeah, let's, okay, that's good. We'll get questions in a minute. What about next area, the specs for the playing field?
So we provided our typical turf specification to the commission. That was part of the submissions off to you. So it is a synthetic turf field to dual fiber, so it's slit film and monofilament. We do have talking points or a memo from the turf manufacturer that they do not use PFAS products in the manufacturing of their turf field. And as previously mentioned before, the infill material on that we're using on here is a mixture of silica sand and a plant-based organic infill, rock fill. It's thermally modified southern yellow pine from Georgia. So that's the infill material. There is an underlayment shock pad that's beneath the turf field, and then beneath that is the typical crushed stone synthetic turf profile with other trees.
Great, thank you. And then I think Commissioner Herbst might have asked for this, the O&amp;M plan, did we get something on that?
Yeah, that was another O&amp;M plan that I provided to the commission. Typically, maintenance of the field is mostly just sweeping, picking up debris that kind of comes on the field. There really is no soaping or cleaning per se that happens. If some organics get spilled, let's say a gatorade, things like that, we typically like to warm that up, wipe that up, but there's no need for chemicals to be sprayed on here. It's just more of a manual sweeping to take debris off the field.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, before I go to Allison, she may have a comment or two. Just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle @BostonEnviron and using the hashtag #ComComHearing. Allison, any other flavor on this?
Not really, Chair. One minor clarifying question. The, you said that there was testing material, there were lab testing provided. Was that from a a site elsewhere, or was that from the manufacturer?
That was from the manufacturer. They provided testing results, but also in our specifications, part of the submittal process, we do require that the turf manufacturers provide testing on a list of 30 PFAS compounds in addition to the typical heavy metals and zinks and leads and that type of test requirement. So we do have that in the front end perspective of our submittal process.
Thank you. No further questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Conan?
I was wondering about this last time, so I kind of have the same question. How long before those trees develop the canopy that's shown in the diagram that you shared with us to provide shelter for spectators as well as players?
So that was our adjusted idea of about a 25-year canopy, and it really depends, obviously, on certain sites. This site has fairly good root volume, so we would imagine that trees, at least along the southern portion of the site, along the MBTA line, should reach a mature size a little bit quicker just due to the fact that they have a better environment to grow into. But they, that's kind of our recommendation. We looked at typical growth rates of kind of mature trees at the individual species levels, and then just tried to extrapolate that over a 25-year timeframe.
One other quick thought, and I know we're still going through some of the local wetlands ordinance promulgation of regulations, but this is an environmental justice community, and I'm wondering about urban heat island effect and what kind of provision should be made for shelter because it is possible for people to be exposed to very high heat in an open space like this.
Correct. And so in addition to the tree canopy and the shade provided by the trees, we would rely on the rock fill, the infill, this organic infill that we're installing on the fields. It's a hydrophilic material, so it absorbs water. So during rain events or condensations in the morning is the evening time, this material does absorb and holds onto water, and then throughout the day, the evaporation as it comes off provides a cooling effect onto the field. There is testing that has been done by this particular company, Brock, where they tested a black crumb rubber turf in conjunction next to a rock fill type of infill turf. And the heat island or the heat temperature differential between a crumb rubber and the rock fill is significant, up to 40 degrees lower than the crumb rubber. So those two have been kind of combination are going to help manage heat. We do have water available, exterior mounted drinking fountains on the field house, which is the upper right-hand corner building on the site, so people can have access to water.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Rachel?
I think, I think my question has just been answered. So how long do you think it will be before they get to be full size, and that is 25 years? Or is it going to be before that?
This one right here, this is our extrapolation of in a 25-year, the typical kind of growth habit of each particular species, about how big they would get. Granted, as time goes on, the trees will continue to get larger. They don't typically stop growing.
Okay, and maybe this was in the proposal and I didn't see it, but how are you gonna sort of monitor this stuff so that if, you know, a tree doesn't make it, it's going to be replaced?
So we do have stipulations in our specifications. There are warranty periods, I believe, up to a year after final acceptance for the trees. If they do not survive, they will be replaced under warranty. Typically, after a year of being established, most trees are likely to survive. If it's really, really hot out, we could look into the club about supplemental irrigation. Typically, that is more needed during the establishment of the trees when they become installed. But part of the contractors' obligations are they do need to water. They typically put these little water bags on there and go around and fill them up once or twice a day just to ensure establishment of the trees.
So would you object to a condition that said that if a tree dies, let's just say within 10 years, that you're responsible for replacing it?
I would, I'd consult back with the club on that, if that's something that the club wants to take on to, because this would be past a typical landscaper's kind of installation warranty.
Yeah, but, and I understand the one year and I appreciate it, but, you know, they, at least it looks like around here, some trees just don't make it, you know, and it isn't for lack of care or, you know, water or anything. They just, for one reason or another, don't thrive. So, you know, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to make sure that if that is occurring in this, in this spot, that we, you know, have some, somebody who's going to be responsible for replacing the trees.
Yeah, let me just interject here. I think that would be in the landscape plan that is, will be given to staff. So Allison, I think that's a common requirement, the landscaping plan, management of the landscaping post-order. So I, it should be in there anyway. If it's not, let's put it in for this project.
Okay, that satisfies me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Could you, I think there's maybe a slide, previous slide that shows the trees that are there now. Yeah, yeah. So I think number 10 you have showing is being taken out, but it looks to me like it's not on your property. So I was wondering about that.
Oh, tree number 10.
Yeah.
That one, we could, that's a tree that we could leave in. You're correct. I believe the club did sell that parcel of land. That particular tree is one of the Tree of Heavens. There's a very large and thick clump of the alienthus that's down in that area. So potentially, we could leave that tree since it's not on our property. I wanted to, I wanted to inventory, inventory that one. That one was six inches caliber.
Right. And then, you know, the most of the trees are right along the blue line, and your indication was they needed to come out because they were a safety hazard, but looking, you know, just on Google Earth, it's clear that they trim quite thoroughly. I guess I'm just wondering whether that is really necessary. You'd have all these trees providing shade, and they look like they're outside of the area that you you know, plan other activities in place. So it's a lot of trees to take out for a reason that doesn't seem to necessarily bear up.
So they're growing in between kind of the fences. There's the MBTA line fence, which is obviously on their property, and then the Boston Scores property. We do have a tall 20-foot chain link fence that's around there that was due to the existing baseball kind of outfield that's just preventing, you know, home runs and whatnot from hitting the blue line. So there's, there's an, in between that fence lines, there's about a foot or so in between the two fences, and these were where most of the trees are growing up, especially down here from about 17 down toward the left, down to 27. So for those reasons, and the fact that the MBTA clear, kind of just clear trims their property back, the trees are kind of heavily branched onto our properties. So we would like to remove them just due to potential hazards and interactions with the perimeter fence.
Well, let me just ask, are they actually not on your property?
No, they are on our property.
Okay, all right. Well, I don't know where to go with that. It seems to me you could do branch trimming as opposed to taking out that many trees. But that's all the comments I have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public? Raise their hand, Allison.
I am not seeing anyone. Let me check the inbox or any emailed comments. No comments.
Okay, okay. So it seems like the outstanding issue is the removal versus the pruning of the trees that Commissioner Herbst brought up. Is the owner's rep on the line? Maybe we could just ask him or her directly.
I think that's me. Good, how are you?
Good. So I figured we'd talk to you directly and cut out the middleman here. So it's sounding like there's a preference to prune the trees that are, I guess, in between those two fences. I think that's where they are. Do you have any objections to pruning as opposed to replacing?
Well, my initial reaction is that it seems like a much better environment for the public and for spectators to have the new tree canopy that, if we're patient enough to allow it to develop, that would provide a better sort of overall environment. As Josh Malonig mentioned, the existing trees are sort of intertwined with the fencing, and we're hoping to do some fencing repairs as part of the project. So the ability to remove the trees that are sort of intermeshed with the fence in the areas that the fence needs to be replaced certainly is a preference from our perspective. I don't know if we could do as many plantings as is intended if we were to keep the existing trees in place. And I do think that the new trees are of a type that are more desirable than the more I don't know, it's kind of scrub trees that exist along the perimeter.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Yeah, well, I was, I guess I was assuming that one didn't preclude the other. It looks like mostly that they could coexist, but I'm not speaking as any kind of expert on that, so. I mean, I think it's preferable. I don't, I don't know. But the commission thinks, I don't know if you want to, whether it's worth holding up a hearing on that. It just seems like a lot of removal that maybe wasn't necessary.
Okay. Okay, and when you said preferable, you meant keeping the existing trees?
Yes.
Preferable, okay, thank you. Okay. I think what we could do is add this to the landscaping plan. And I'm just trying to figure out a way to to do that. I guess we'd have staff, you know, John, go back and think about what Commissioner Herbst has mentioned and put it in the landscaping plan, maybe, how should I put this? You did put forth some good reasons for your preference, but maybe you could reinforce that or not in the landscaping plan.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Might a compromise be to do selective retention of existing where, you know, for example, it's not interfering with the fence, and it won't interfere with the new trees that are being planted, something along those lines, like we're very receptive to trees.
Yeah. At least from my perspective, that makes sense. Perhaps it looks to me like along with the parking lot's going to be, there's less interference. I can't tell about the fence, but less, it's not as close to the other trees. There might, I think if there are some that could stay, that would be great.
Great, good. So let's get that into the landscaping plan, please. Okay.
And Mr. Chair, into the landscaping plan as well as, is some way of monitoring the ones that don't make it?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's been noted. Okay. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Conan?
I would say aye, but I also wanted to add my support to Commissioner Herbst's suggestion here that we keep as many, try to keep as many existing trees as possible. I had taken the comment on safety at face value, but from the questioning from Commissioner Herbst, it's clear that it's more a preference about the entanglement with the fence than anything else. So the more that can be kept, the better. And perhaps they can all be kept while the new ones are coming up, and as there's more canopy being developed, then these can be taken down. Until that time, the pruning sounds good. It's an aye from me.
Okay, Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries for nothing. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Notice of Intent for DEP File 006921 in Boston File Number 2022-2023-008 from Epsilon Associates, Inc. on behalf of 900 Morrissey Boulevard LLC. I guess care of, I'm sorry, that's care of. I thought it was a percentage. Care of the Community Builders, Inc. for the proposed renovation of the existing hotel building into approximately 104 portable residential units and associated amenities space and of the parking facility located at 900 Morrissey Boulevard in Dorchester. The resource area is land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hey guys, Alyssa Jacobs with Epsilon Associates. I also have with me other members of the project team. I brought reinforcements tonight to help answer all your questions. I have David Tanner from BWA Architecture, Echo Burquist, Project Manager, and Susanna Combus from the Community Builders, Inc. as well.
Great, thank you. So I think where we left off, we were looking for a deployable barrier. And the concern was raised that you were looking at a 500-foot deployable barrier, if memory serves me correct. And the thought was that could be very long and cumbersome to deploy, so we were looking for an alternative to that and also a flood deployment management plan or flood barrier deployment management plan, however it's termed. So that was the outstanding item I had. Allison, was there anything else?
That was what I had as well.
Thank you. Okay, so let's focus on that, if you don't mind.
Sure. With me, David Tanner will speak to that and the considerations that were made in the selection process.
Good evening, everyone. David Tanner from BWA Architecture. Yes, and to address the issue of the O&amp;M and the emergency deployment plan, we are assembling one, but the guts of that deployment plan really have to evolve when the panels are purchased, when they arrive on site. Along with the purchase of the panels comes one day Along with the purchase of the panels comes one day of training from the manufacturer. That training will involve their staff as well as the staff that is intended to deploy them when they go, when they're erected for an emergency situation. So some of the some of the knowledge that we need for the deployment is is specific to the site and will will be developed on site when that training takes place.
Oh, great, thank you. And I think, Allison, that might have spurred your comment that we want this plan prior to COC being issued.
Yes, Chair.
Great. Okay.
I I did have an additional question, if you're meddled around the, was there, what, did you assess other strategies as opposed to a full 500-foot barrier? And could you talk about that?
Oh, we did. We looked at at several options. Due to the the nature of the building, we have to get, we have to use the the dry floodproofing method for the entire first floor, with the exception being the stairwells, which provide egress from the residential uses above. Given that, there there really is no opportunity to to berm. You know, another another option would be to really eliminate all uses on the first floor and and bring everything up. But that that wasn't reasonable. Automatic barriers are sometimes an option. But again, because we need to dry floodproof the entire building, the deployable barriers are are more efficient and and they seem to be in use around Boston and the Seaport area fairly frequently. So we we have a lot of confidence that they can be used here.
Understood. What a follow-up question, though, you are, you're saying that you could not instead deploy a strategy where you're using them for entrances and around critical systems, but you you instead propose you have to wrap the whole building because of the structure of the building?
That's correct. That's correct. Yes, the, yeah, the building walls would would have to be completely demolished and rebuilt in a in a different fashion. And 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 this is a fairly high flood level for the building, so there's quite a lot of pressure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at BostonViro and using the hashtag COMCOMHearing. Commissioner Khan?
Did I understand the alternatives explored correctly, that they would be more expensive?
Yes, and substantially more expensive. In in the case of rebuilding the first floor wall to 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 make the entire first floor dry floodproof, very, very expensive.
Prohibitively expensive.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. No questions, too.
Commissioner Richmond?
I don't, I don't think I, I don't think I have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Okay. Allison, did we get anyone or Kat, anyone from the public?
We received a public comment from Mr. Roach, which is in your file shortly after the last hearing, but I see no public, additional public comments.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond? Commissioner Richmond?
I'm sorry, I apologize, I was unmuted. I.
Thank you, you scared me. We need you for quorum.
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries for nothing. Okay, thank you. Okay.
We did have one minor redline comment on the draft order of conditions. I didn't know if that needed to be discussed or.
Yeah, we've closed the hearing, so maybe you could discuss it with staff.
Okay.
Thank you, Alyssa. Okay. Allison, I know that Holcombe wanted to be continued, they don't have a DEP file number. What about the Hebrew Center? I'm not seeing it on my agenda here.
Oh, they, apologies if they're not on the slides, they are on the agenda, I believe they're here tonight. Let me check the slides quickly as as we go through.
Me. Okay. Okay.
Chair, they are in the script, I can, I will correct the slides.
I have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I found it in the worksheet here. Okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for unassigned DEP file number and unassigned Boston file number from Environmental Health and Engineering, Inc. on behalf of the Hebrew Rehabilitation Center for Parking Lot Repairs and Ongoing Lawn and Landscape Maintenance located at 1200, yeah, I'm sorry, 1200 Center Street in Rosendale. The resource areas are riverfront area, waterfront area, and bordering land subject to flooding. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hello, this is Cindy Campasano from Environmental Health and Engineering. I am the project manager and a principal consultant at EH&amp;E. I'm here, I can give a brief overview and then I'm going to turn it over to the project engineer and project architect, landscape architect, to give you more details. If at any point in time you have questions or if you prefer to just move to questions based on your review, please let us know.
Okay, great.
So EH&amp;E was retained by Hebrew Rehab Center in early 2022 after a request was made from Boston Conservation Commission for retroactive NOI for repaving work that had been done on a pre-existing parking lot. So the resource area needing protection is Bussy Brook, which transacts the property from west to east. And the repaving that happened previously was on the south parking lot. As we got into the project and started doing the engineering evaluations, we realized that there was pending work as well that we wanted to get in under the NOI. So the scope expanded to include repaving of an existing parking lot in the northern part of the property, as well as some landscape and stormwater system improvements. And those are all included in the NOI. In addition, the NOI includes a a long-term operation and maintenance plan for infrastructure and landscaping at the property. So with that, I will turn it over to Bill Doyle, who is the project engineer.
Great, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Bill Doyle here, project engineer. So I guess you guys will control, I haven't done a conservation commission hearing with you guys in a while, so you guys will control the the graphic here. What you have in front of you, this first graphic, is basically the majority of the property where the where the where the stream is, in the center of the stream, in the center of the the image there, the graphic, the the plan, you can see kind of the, the, can I, I can't use my pointer here, right? You guys can't see this, right? Is that a no?
That's a no, but write some verbal description. I can try to imagine where you would want a pointer to be, and I can use my pointer.
Okay, so so in the center is the is the the stream channel, kind of goes left to right on the page, and there's kind of a weird amorphous polygon shape that 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 extends somewhat into the the parking lot. In the center is the stream, the north or the top side of the page is the north parking lot, and the bottom side of the page is the south parking lot. They're both kind of shaded and hatched a little bit. The south parking lot is the retroactive one that had been repaved. The process for repaving there was to grind off the top cores, take it away, fill in any deep potholes and everything. And then so remove, remove that from sight and then bring in, I think it was an inch and a half of of top cores and kind of and kind of repave and 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 clean that up. So that's what happened on the south parking lot. We want to do on the north parking lot similar, because the north parking lot, like the south parking lot, is is unraveling a little bit. And and the edge treatments need a little, need a little help. So the project would be the repaving of the north parking lot, again, grinding off the the top cores and any loose, loose deep potholes, this type of stuff, and and then re-repaving that. Also included in the project would be new curbing. We want to upgrade some of the catch basins, both in the new parking lot and in the in the in the in the north parking lot and in the south parking lot to have some, have deep sumps and to also make sure all the piping and everything that connects them is clean and structurally sound. That basically is the, and I mentioned curbing, curbing along the river's edge to capture water, because right now, water basically runs off of both parking lots directly into the stream, unmitigated, unchecked. So hopefully, we we can get some curbing up there and have that, you know, the the runoff directed to catch basins. And obviously, we don't want to, we want to have a hard break there, so plows aren't plowing snow directly in there either. So it gives a nice visual and physical stop for that. So as far as the, you know, the 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 infrastructure improvements, the drainage improvements, the parking lot improvements, that's it, repaving, curbing, and and upgrade to some of the to the the catch basins and piping. If you can see the graphic, I should have started here, the the resource areas along the stream, you see there's a narrow offset that's just outside of the stream channel. That's the 25-foot riverfront area, offset that 75 feet, and you have the 100-foot riverfront area. And then again, offset that one more, and you can see at the top of the page is our 200-foot riverfront area. So the whole property is is within, you know, within riverfront. The the amorphous shape there that kind of has a belly to it, that is the, I guess we're calling it the preliminary flood zone. It's not a flood zone that shows up in FEMA yet, but it is definitely a flood zone. I do have some empirical data that does say, you know, that that does surcharge in that area and kind of comes into the parking lot. That basically is the shape, I forget the elevation of that contour is, but that's basically the shape that comes from that preliminary analysis done by FEMA or others, not by myself, to kind of come up with that flood zone. As far as the infrastructure and the resource areas, that is is kind of my spiel. I think I saw David J., the landscape architect, is on board on online here tonight. He can talk about some of the existing and proposed landscaping.
Okay, so two quick, two quick questions. Can you talk a little bit about the erosion controls that you'd be putting in place here? And I will note that this is, a a a good amount of this work is a after-the-fact NOI. And what the commission likes to see, and this is a TAPR landscape architect, what the commission likes to see in these cases, in lieu of issuing an enforcement order, would like to see improvements to the to the area. So in this type of situation, whether it be stormwater improvements, more robust landscaping. So those two things, first of all, erosion controls, and then when we get into landscape architect, the architect presentation, what can we do better?
So. Yeah. Okay, I can speak, I can speak a little bit to the to the erosion controls, and I don't know, it doesn't show up on on this zoom-in image right now. But the, so erosion controls will end up around the north parking lot, you know, just between the the top of the riverbank and any of the work we do. And we'll basically engulf, you know, from the the hospital kind of counterclockwise all the way around up to the up to the roadway. So we basically capture the the entire entirety of the parking lot in which we will be doing, you know, active work right now. The the southern parking lot, we're, we don't really have any erosion control there, because we're not doing any major work. We are working on the catch basin down there, so we'll, 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 we'll have some stuff around that to protect that. But basically, that's just an upgrade to that, to that structure. As far as upgrades go, like I said, we'll, we'll be looking to replace some of the the, well, not some of them, all the catch basins there with deep sump catch basins that have, you know, the the oil trap hood and all of that to make an attempt to to get to a an improvement. But I think the improvements that you'll see are, like you said, more going to be in the in landscaping and along the river's edge. But there is erosion controls, the graphic that's up right now doesn't really show them too clearly. But yeah, yeah, the pointer, yeah. You can trace the northern, yeah, if you want to zoom in one there, can you zoom in there at all or?
No, I'm sorry.
So along that northern parking lot, north of the stream, there's kind of a dashed line. And basically, we're just taking erosion controls around the complete, the entirety of that, of that northern parking lot. And there's a detail on that sheet of showing what that is. We're looking at, you know, the nailed-in quarry logs with the with the steel fence backing. And we're we're amenable to anything else that you guys would like to see there, because we really want to make sure we don't, we don't want to go into the river, because we don't want to get into a river cleanup. So that's kind of our objective there.
Okay.
David, are you, are you on, are you on board?
I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to speak to some of the the existing trees and some of the, and the proposed trees, and then you proposed landscaping, that would be, it sounds like they're very interesting.
If we can proceed to the landscape plans, oh, this. This is, this, okay. Uh, well, right, okay, I'm not recognizing, yes, fine.
Or do you want me to go back to the plan?
I go back to the plan, that would be fine, yeah. Yes, indeed. Yeah, we're calling for plantings along the steeper portions of the banks, native plantings. I have the Grolo sumac and some junipers and and to hold the slopes and look a lot better. And soils held in place with burlap staked in place. I did call for a little bit of ornamental planting, just because now is the time to do it. There may or may not be funds to install that, but but that's included in the plan. All, we are not removing any existing trees except for one, I think it may be a volunteer kitalpa that's growing out of a one of the headwalls and maybe about four inches, however. All other trees are remaining.
Okay. Okay, so a couple of quick questions, all native species?
Yes.
Okay, and you mentioned the ornamental may or may not be included in the budget?
Exactly, yeah.
So according to the principle that I had espoused earlier about the, in lieu of an enforcement order, making things better, I think we would want to put in a special condition that those plantings would be required. Okay. With that, I would go, first of all, remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at CC@boston.gov via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at BostonViro and using the hashtag COMCOMHearing. Allison, I know that you had suggested something about in order to prevent a situation like this happening again. And I will note that I think that the self-parking lot work had been done way back in 2021, and we're just seeing you now for that work. Clearly, there's some education that needs to be done here with management or staff or whoever authorized doing that work without getting proper permitting. So Allison, I'm interested in your ideas on how to incorporate the conditions into management agreements and also some type of notice provision so that five, 10 years from now, whoever is undertaking work like this or says, hey, it's time to repave the parking lot, knows that they have to get proper permitting. So I'm interested in your perspective.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think that's very in line with what I was thinking. One thought would be to model it off of some of the prior conditions that the commission has adopted for condo association documents. So requirement or or conditions that we use for construction teams, so requirements to acknowledge elements of the Order of Conditions or the Act by new staff or by groundskeeping, whoever they're appropriate. I'd like to, since I expect this is continued due to the DEP file number, I think it would be helpful to hear from the team what they would propose as steps to take in this area as well.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
That was all, well, sorry, one additional thing is what would the commissioners or the or the proponent think of potential signage around the resource areas? It may not be needed in this space, but but food for thought.
Yep, great idea. Great idea. Okay, Commissioner Khan?
Thank you, Chair Parker. I wasn't clear on what is completed and what is yet to be done. Is it all done already? Thank you, Chair Parker. I wasn't clear on what is completed and what is yet to be done, is it all done already?
The only, Bill Doyle here, the engineer, the only part that has been completed right now is the lower park, the southern parking lot, uh, the bottom of the plan. Um, uh, it has what, like, uh, like the, the chair said, uh, it had been repaved back in two thousand one. Um, everything else, the landscaping, the northern parking lot, the, any of the stormwater improvements have not been done, um, so it's the only thing that's been done is the repaving of the southern parking lot.
When you say two thousand one, do you mean two thousand twenty-one?
Twenty-one, twenty-one, I'm sorry, yes, sorry.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I like the idea of adding more plants there for sure, I mean, perennials, New England natives, you know, things that we always would like to recommend. This is also an opportunity, because such mistakes happen due to lack of education perhaps, um, lack of dissemination of information in an effective manner, so I like Allison's idea of putting signage. So when people see the signage, they will be informed as to why these regulations exist, where the resource area is, how we can all play a role, and should all play a role in protecting these resource areas, I would very much like to see some good signage here that, uh, points out the resource areas, and hopefully also about the vegetation and how it helps the resource areas. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Um, yeah, I, 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 um, absolutely agree with the comments made by staff and, uh, and since this does not have a number and we're going to have to see it again, um, you know, I hope that when we, they come back, they will have a recommendation for, uh, signage and a recommendation consistent with what, um, staff has suggested.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Herbst?
Um, a couple of questions, one, I think just a clarification, you've got a twenty-five-foot riverfront area and a two-hundred-foot riverfront area, but, um, I think only the twenty-five-foot riverfront area is relevant in Boston unless I'm missing something.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's true, um, we, we did show the, uh, the one-hundred-foot and the two-hundred-foot as just, yeah.
All right, um, by, I, I think I'm particularly, uh, glad and, and interested in the stormwater treatment improvements, I think that's, uh, probably the most important thing you can do. I do have a question, because there are a number of places on the plan that you talk about, um, clean and reconstruct riprap slope as needed. Um, that is not a small thing, and at, if, if you're really thinking about doing that, we, we would need detail on that and, and that, I mean, it's much more involved, so I just want to understand whether, whether you think it is needed or what you had in mind.
So there are some, uh, there are several outfalls, um, small eight-inch, twelve-inch outfalls. Um, and the ends of those outfalls have been kind of collapsed, the rocks, a- and, and the riprap there is, you know, this four-to-six-inch-type riprap, uh, it's kind of like Boston Water and Sewer Special out here. Um, the channel is very much, uh, a, a contrived, you know, drainage way, um, to some degree managed and maintained by Boston Water and Sewer, so we have a very, uh, uh, in- industrial feel to, to the stuff out there, so what that's referring to is those kind of, the general area around those outfalls, to make sure the outfall, the pipe, and the riprap, like, just, just below the outfall is, uh, is functioning and flowing right.
Okay, so I-
The intent isn't to redo the whole, the whole channel, we can't, we can't do that, it's like Boston Water and Sewer's kind of,
Okay.
Uh, their, their slope, their, their channel.
Okay, so I would want to see photos of those locations and, and some, you know, design schematics of, of what you have planned there, because that's, you know, whether, I don't know whether you need filter fabric there or, or take, how much you need to take things apart, I think that I would want to understand better.
Yeah, okay, it, it should be relatively, you know, a simple detail, because it is, it's just at those, those localized out, outfalls, but yeah, we can, we can, we can pull that together.
Okay, thank you.
For sure.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, Allison, I see we have some comments in the chat, we, what else do we have? Anybody else raise their hand, or the person who put in the comments want to, um, give them verbally?
No other comments or hands raised, but, Julia, if you would like to give your comments verbally, otherwise we could read them. Okay, would you like me to read them, Chair, or?
Yeah, please, if you don't mind, or actually, do it, I don't.
Oh, either. Has any thought been given to pervious pavement, pavement for at least a strip along the top of bank? Parking is very tight on site, but this is an unhappily channelized stream that needs lots of help. Are any trees proposed? Shade in those lots would be a huge improvement, how heavily salted are the lots in winter, and has there been any coordination with Boston Water and Sewer?
Okay, great, um, so why don't we take them, uh, one at a time here? Um, first question about the pervious pavement?
So we hadn't looked at pervious pavement along, along the edge, the, the pavement as it is today comes right to the top of the bank, right before it goes down, we hadn't looked at it. Um, we could explore it, I'd be a little leery about it, just because that's kind of the, the most, uh, you know, uh, it gets the most, uh, uh, wear and tear, if you will, along the top of the edge, so I'd be worried that it would unravel a bit, but we can take a look at that, uh, and see what that would mean.
Um, great.
I, uh, uh, well, okay, so I figured the other question was-
Yeah, next is, um, the, are there any trees proposed?
Uh, David, don't we have something there, there's existing trees there, or?
Uh, there are, uh, quite a few existing trees, I've got some, um, you know, tall shrubs, uh, uh, um, I think I may have called for a, uh, I think I called for a large pine tree.
What are we looking at, two or three, or ten or twelve?
One pine, large pine tree, uh, there, uh, I want to say, uh, uh, eight or, uh, what do we have here? Uh, bayberry, nine-bar, quoted engine by Burnham, those are, you know, yeah, uh, five-to-eight-foot, uh, shrubs, uh, and I have, uh, or about ten of those, uh, one white pine.
So north of ten, ten new plantings?
So those, those are all new plantings.
How, how many, about ten, ten or eleven?
Oh, oh, ten or, uh, about ten, uh, are the, oh, uh, I'm sorry, there are third, sixteen, uh, uh, altogether, juniper, bayberry, nine-bar quoted engine by Burnham, and then I've got, uh, uh, fifty, uh, junipers to hold the bank. I've got thirty, uh, grow low sumac. Uh, and uh, sixteen more grow low sumac, a little further downstream.
Okay, so it seems like unless I missed it, um, I think we need a more detailed, um, plan on those plantings, next time you come in.
More detail, how, uh?
David, maybe we could get something with a little more color on it that identifies those, those different trees, because it, so they pop out and, and, and we can see exactly, you know, get that.
Okay, yeah, that's, okay, um, what about snow management? Uh, question is, uh, salt, and, you know, and I'm also interested in snow removal.
Um, Cindy, do you have a sense of what, uh, what the, uh, what the center does today? Um, you're muted.
Um, I, I honestly don't know the answer to that question, I think John Bogus is on from the center, I, he might be able to speak to that directly, or we can track it down and get back to the commission on that.
We, we'd like to see a snow management plan, so I don't know if we need to get into it tonight, you can bring it next time.
Is there, let me, as, without getting too far into it, is there a recommendation for, uh, for salt and sanding, is there a special, any, any chemical that you guys would prefer?
Uh, yeah, we have, we have asked for snow management plans in the past, uh, and it's, uh, you know, it's, it's, um, uh, somewhat site-specific, um, because we deal with a lot of roads and a lot of, uh, parking lots of different sizes, right? Um, I do remember over in that area, um, I think there was one a couple of years ago, let me, um, try to dig through our files and see if I can find something.
Okay, we can, we can figure out.
Yeah, Steph is happy to work with the proponent.
Okay, great. Uh, and then, uh, coordination with BWSC, um, I assume you guys are going to go in and see, uh, Mr. Sullivan, or you have consulted with BWC at some point?
I have talked with Phil LaRocque about this on the flood zone and the ownership, and, because the, the whole channel is basically an easement, um, both for the channel and the sewer, there's, there's a bunch of sewer lines and everything underneath this, uh, that, that also have easements around them, kind of crisscrossing, but mostly going linearly with the channel. Um, so we, we definitely spoke with them about, you know, the, uh, conflicts with plantings and work over them, but also, you know, the, uh, the discussion of what level of maintenance and everything would be there. Uh, and they had, they had mentioned that they, they do struggle with that stream, both here and, and downstream, uh, and, and trying to maintain it, and also maintaining it within private properties and their reasons and everything. So we did have that conversation, um, I don't know if, uh, you need more i- input from there, if there's any specific questions you want us to kind of call back and ask on them.
Yeah, at this point, I, what I would, what I'd say to you is, uh, Commissioner Sullivan will, uh, most likely be at the next hearing, so, um, as, uh, Commissioner Herbst previewed, um, he's going to want to know, she's going to want to know, we're all going to want to know, but especially him, uh, more about your stormwater management, so. Okay.
And Chair never raised.
Go ahead. I'm sorry?
That's all right, um, I, I have no further comment, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
I, and I vote aye, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Okay, um, okay, there's been a number of continuances, starting with notice of intent for unassigned DEP file number in Boston file number from FLOF Engineering, Infrastructure and Environment LLC, on behalf of Polcom regarding, um, the, um, Charlestown Terminal Rehabilitation of a Timber Bulkhead. Uh, also continued, scroll down to the February, you know, continued also, notice of intent for DEP file number zero-zero-six-one-seven-seven-two in Boston file number twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-one-zero. Uh, DEP file number zero-zero-six-one-eight-nine-one in Boston, twenty-twenty-two-dash-zero-four-six. DEP file number zero-zero-six-one-seven-zero-four, Boston file number twenty-twenty dash zero-zero-seven, DEP file number zero-zero-six-one-eight-two-zero. Boston file number twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-four-five, continued also, been a request for determination of applicability regarding the property located at Two Starling, thirty-four and thirty-six Willett Street in West Roxbury. Uh, also continued notice of intent for DEP file number zero-zero-six-one-nine-zero-seven in Boston file number twenty-twenty-two-dash-zero-five-six. The commission will now begin its regular meeting, first item on the agenda has been continued, and that was a request for a certificate of compliance with DEP file number zero-zero-six-one-six-one-three. Uh, now is the time for administrative updates, if there are any.
One, I am happy to report that as of February thirteenth, we are no longer in a drought.
Yes, I saw that, great, thank you. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is acceptance of the following orders of conditions, notice of intent for DEP file number zero-zero-six-one-nine-one-one in Boston file number twenty-twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-two. Notice of intent for DEP file number zero-zero-six-one-nine-one-six in Boston file number twenty-twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-four. Notice of intent for DEP file number zero-zero-six-one-nine-one-eight in Boston file number twenty-twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-five. Notice of intent for DEP file number zero-zero-six-one-nine-one-five in Boston file number twenty-twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-three. Uh, do you have a motion to issue those orders of conditions?
So moved.
Thank you, we have, thank you, Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Uh, last item that passes four-nothing, um, last item on the agenda is acceptance of the meeting minutes from February fourth, first, twenty-twenty-three, and I apologize, I haven't had a time, haven't had time to review them, so we'll just defer that to the next hearing. Um, and that brings us to our favorite motion, the motion to adjourn by acclamation, do we have any objection to adjournment this evening?
No.
I declare this. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Have a good night.